Beautiful. We're live. Everything's rehearsed and ready to go. There you go. But yes, ma'am, I believe I do. I think we're all good on that. So, we're waiting for a couple of councilmen to make their way up. And Tim Lomar is going to kick us off tonight for our work session. We're going to be discussing the budget tonight, and then we will do that again next week. As of right now, we are planning on our meeting next week is going to be at the Family Arena. We're expecting a very large crowd for the holidays, so we should have that coming up. Okay. So, Mr. Brazel, Mr. Cronin are on their way up. I don't know if Mr. Hollander is on his way up or not?
He will be for the meeting, but not the work session.
Okay. And we were just informed right before this that Mr. Klinghammer had a death in the family that just happened. So, your prayers are with the Klinghammer family tonight. I don't know the details about anything, just that, as you might imagine, he's not going to be joining us tonight for the work session or for the meeting. So, if we can have our two Joes join us?
I'm sorry?
We're rolling and just waiting on you guys.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. I wasn't on Joanne. She was holding me up.
I apologize to you, Councilman Brazel.
There you go. All right. So, tonight, we're starting things off with an invitation that we made to all of our elected officials in the county government, obviously. And prosecuting attorney Tim Lomar is going to lead us off tonight. So, Mr. Lomar, if you want to kick us off.
Sure. Well, thank you for the invitation. Appreciate that. I'll start out by saying that I've worked, as all the elected officials I'm sure have, very closely with Steve and Joanne. And so, they're very familiar with some of the challenges I want to express to you guys tonight. And I know they're doing everything they can do to try to plug some of those gaps where they exist. But we're in a spot here where there's just not enough to go around. Let me just give you a snapshot of some of the things that we're dealing with in the prosecutor's office and, you know, moving forward to give you some idea of where I think we need to get for the constituency. The very basics are this: Our caseload is increasing at a significantly rapid pace compared to years past. There are a variety of factors why that is, but we're up about 1,000 cases over where we were last year. In addition to that, the severity of the cases is getting worse. We are seeing what I would consider a significant rise in violent crimes, gun crimes, drug-related crimes. The heroin epidemic, which you guys are all very familiar with, continues to be an issue for us. The attorney workload is significantly above best practice standards. My average felony attorney carries a caseload of just under 350 cases at any given time. The best practice standard is just under 200, about 180. So, we're significantly exceeding that. We have, as you all know, the police department's personnel has increased significantly over the last decade to 15 years. More officers on the streets, which is great. Of course, you know, we work with night agencies across the county. So, I believe my math is maybe not perfect, but we're about 100 more officers on the streets today than we were 10 years ago. And obviously, if they're doing their jobs, which they are, that means more work for us. But we are working with basically the same exact numbers that we had 10 years ago. We have, if you ask any of the social service agencies or the nonprofits in this community that work with our special victims unit, our sex crimes, our child abuse unit, they will tell you that we have what is widely considered to be the best special victims unit in the entire region, if not the state. Because of the limitations that we're faced with, we're going to have to cut back on how we handle those cases. Child abuse numbers continue to rise, unfortunately. We can't handle those cases at the same level or the same way that we have been. It's just not workable. So, we've had to shift some responsibilities around, restructure, and sort of adjust expectations, unfortunately, internally, to try to do everything we can to deal with this. So, having said all that, I am aware that everybody's in the same situation. You're going to hear similar stories from my colleagues as well. And I know the administration is aware of this. I've asked them, and they are agreeing to work with me in this regard. We need to come up with a plan moving forward, because this is not sustainable. And I can tell you, the trends are not going anywhere but up. And so, I will be keeping you all posted as we move forward. And again, we're in active communications on a monthly basis, if not more often than that, so they're very aware of the concerns we have as well. But, you know, we're a few years away from a real crisis, potentially, in the way we handle law enforcement in this community. That's all I have. If you have any questions for me, please feel free.
Any questions for Mr. Lomar?
Well, I mean, you got some staff. Did you get some additional staff last year?
We did. We got two new support staff positions, clerical positions.
And so, in a perfect world, what would it be required to get your office back into a best practice?
We are probably four people away: One attorney, an investigator, and two additional staff persons. And the reason I focus on the staff, I'll tell you, because with the drastic increase in digital media, now every police department has to audiotape and videotape an interrogation or an interview. Plus, we have two departments that use the body cams. All that footage has to be reviewed. We have to get all of it. And somebody has to be the one to look at it. Our digital media files in just two years have doubled. In fact, we had a sort of an intervention meeting with Simon about how much our system is weighing down the county IS department, just primarily because of that. So, that's, I think, where we need to be. I don't expect to get there tomorrow. I don't expect to get there next year. But we're reaching a point where there's not much more we can do.
Yes, Mr. Cronin.
We were aware of this problem last year, okay? In fact, I had the privilege of last year's chair to write the budget message, okay? And I'll just read a quick paragraph. Members of the county council are considering ways to increase revenue for public safety. We realize that past budgets have cut away the fat, but the budget is slicing in the meat of county government and heading to the bone. St. Charles County voters approved a 35% property tax back in the 70s, been rolled back to the zero that we have currently, okay? Recently, voters in Jackson County, St. Louis, St. Louis City have approved a small property tax added to law enforcement. And basically, I put in there, "Our county is blessed with having a very good public safety team, and your council is determined to keep it that way with your support." We know you need it. We know that every county department needs it, and we can't really do much with the zero per property tax that we have. But, you know, bear in mind, we talked about this a year ago. We've talked about it some, and we're determined to keep your offices stronger, stronger than what it is now, you know? So, bear with us.
Sure. I do appreciate that. Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Is there anything that you can think of, Tim, that we could do to... Is there any possible way we can generate any other kind of income rather than, not saying raise taxes, which is always an alternative, but do you have any ideas that other police departments may be doing? Anything? I mean, that we could do to raise some kind of money or grants or...
We tried to think of something like that last year, and you guys passed the ordinance that allowed us to ask the judges to assess court costs on criminal convictions. That's something that's more of a long-term. I wouldn't even call it a solution. I would call it something that sort of helped stem the tide. No, but I happen to agree with Mr. Cronin. I think the referendum to the voters is, I think it would sell. I think people understand the message. That's why they live here in the first place. They want safe communities, and I think they'd be willing to pay for that.
Can you charge the bad guys anymore?
Well, and it's interesting that you say that, because in the aftermath of the DOJ investigation in Ferguson, the trickle-down has been, there is an extreme reluctance by the Supreme Court. In fact, I think they are telling the state court trial judges that to minimize in any way possible any additional fees and fines to be assessed to defendants. And so, that's another challenge.
Plus, the bad guys have to have money if you're going to go after. And a lot of the people I know in the discussions that we've had in the past, there's not a lot of income there, at least is legal income. So, it's not...
Generally, that's correct.
Generally, it's really tough to get that income. All right. Well, I know you have another appointment tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the invitation.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Who is next, then?
Ms. Shippman.
Mr. Shippman. Thank you to Michelle, by the way, for swapping with Tim and letting him get to his appointment. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Pleasure to have you.
Do you guys have any questions?
You have any questions to start off with?
On 211, the assessment fund?
You're looking a lot better than Mr. Zimmerman is right now with what's been in the post dispatch the last day or two, Scott.
Oh, is that right? I didn't see that.
If you've seen that, you need to look at it.
Couple of things that I have some concerns. One of them deals with a line item, cost allocation. This is the first year that we kind of got hit, our office did, with the amount that's in there. I've got a couple of concerns. First of all, moving forward, that's an unsustainable path. I mean, it went from like $65,000, if you guys take a look at it, to $950,000. And those are costs, I guess, that the county has been absorbing in the past and being passed on to some of the departments. I do want to stress that our revenue numbers, I mean, we can't absorb that type of increase year over year.
Scott, what number, what page was that on?
It's on page...
It's at 214?
Yeah, 220. I think it's line item 45, 910. I just asked that the cost allocation, first of all, that we understand it. As I got a chance to briefly look through it, I amended some of the budget items that we had had. Just because it was so upside down, it makes me nervous. I don't like running that way. Again, our revenue numbers, this outpaces, our expenses are going to outpace it immediately. That's a concern that I have. I'm not saying that it's not worthy. I'm not saying anything like that. I'm just, the point I'm trying to make is, we need to understand it. I found some discrepancies in it. Hopefully, they'll get addressed in the future, but it's important that the elected officials and the department heads understand that study, so we know going forward.
Does anybody have any questions?
Did you see what line?
Which line are you talking about?
Scott, we were talking awful fast while we were flipping through pages.
45, 910. I got page 220 in the budget.
Yeah, 45, 910, cost allocation.
On page 220.
So, $65,000 and change?
That's what it was. That's what I submitted.
Up to the 954?
Exactly.
That's a bit of a hit, huh?
Yep.
Oh, so you're saying, I see what you're saying. So, you're saying that, oh, you submitted 65, and I got you.
Yeah, and you may or may not know that we get very little from general revenue. I think it's $68,000 or something like that. You know, our monies come from state reimbursement from a per parcel count of $3, and additionally, 6 tenths of 1% of what Michelle collects. So, that's kind of our funding.
Well, can we, Mike, are we, what are we, are we supposed to ask about why is, who is this, Bob, or...
If I'm reading this right, it went from $65,000 to $954,000?
You're reading it correctly.
That's what, that's why I like, Bob, can you kind of fill us in a little bit here?
In years past, the overhead charge that was charged to non-general revenue departments was based on 1% of that fund's revenues. That was a system that got started, I think, before I was on the council. I'm not sure how long that goes back, but it goes back a long way. And years that I was on the council, the question was often raised by a department that didn't like what they were being charged 1% for, was, well, where did 1% come from? And the answer was, well, that's the number we came up with. There was really no foundation for it. So, every other year, for a good number of years now, we have had to have a cost allocation plan prepared, and it's prepared by an independent actuarial firm, for the lack of a better term, it's Maximus. And Maximus has prepared a cost allocation plan that takes the costs that a department incurs when furnishing services for other departments and other funds. And every department submits essentially a glorified Excel worksheet that talks about how much each staff member in their department dedicates to other funds, highway, you know, road and bridge, dispatch and alarm. And all of those, all that data is assembled, and the end result of the cost allocation plan is the calculation of indirect cost rates for overhead for the prosecuting attorney's child support enforcement fund, that they are allowed to charge a certain amount of office overhead and get reimbursed for it, and workforce development in their reimbursements from the state. But the data that's provided in that cost allocation plan also gives us data about what general fund supports each of those other non-general revenue funds, assessment, road and bridge, any fund that's not the general fund. So, information services is a big one. Scott, his department receives a ton of support from information services, and that's been a common theme, as we've seen here, that the 1% that we've historically used is way off the mark. So, the cost allocation plan tells us how much the assessment fund received from the general fund, how much road and bridge did. And so, the $960,000 number that you're seeing there is the number right out of the cost allocation plan that was prepared by Maximus, okay?
Was that, was that, or Scott, was this provided to you prior to you doing your budget? So, you just put this down on paper for him to make it work?
It was not provided for him at this time of submission of the budget, because it was not arrived at. Budget submissions go in the middle, are submitted between the middle of August and the middle of September. Then, there's a six-person group of people that gets together, myself included, Assistant Directors of Administration, Administration Tracy Bane and Debbie Salvo, that actually starts assembling the budget. At that point, we found ourselves in a real hole, and...
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Mr. Brazel, you were asking whether Scott knew about this before we sent you the budget.
I'm sorry.
No, yeah, I'm trying to find out if he was asked to prepare his budget, and they turned it in, submitted, and then you changed the number, or somebody, whatever.
Well, the number got changed in the course of preparing that budget. That's where I was going with this, is that the number got changed during, after budget submission, but during the review of the budget and trying to get budgets to balance, I then met with Mr. Shippman, oh, what, Scott, six weeks ago, maybe, something like that?
Well, see, Bob, my question is, this is a huge change, huge.
It is.
And so, you're saying some consulting company came up with a way that we need to do things around here, and...
Well, this is...
Do these department heads know this? I mean, do they know that there was going to be a, what is that, a thousand, 1,500% increase? I mean, I'm just, I mean, how the hell is...
Well, part of the answer to your question, Joe, is the fact that the assessment fund has been undercharged in prior years.
I know, but Bob, I'm not, listen, I'm not criticizing. I'm just trying to figure this out. If I was an executive director of a different group and somebody threw that at me, it seems like it's an offer to defeat them. It's, there's no possible way to, you couldn't, if this was a business, you could never make that work. You could never make these numbers work, when it's been across the board even, and all of a sudden, there's a 1,500% increase?
Right. Well, so far, you've had two elected officials stand up here and tell you the same thing, and that is that they're on an unsustainable trend.
Right.
You've heard that from us. You've heard that from us for two years.
Right.
And everybody is in the same boat here.
But are you pulling money? And I'm asking this, no, no, don't get defensive. I'm just trying to figure this out.
I'm not getting defensive. I'm just telling you the facts.
I know, but are you, are we going to see this from every one of these department directors, where there's this particular, this one particular charge?
The cost allocation is going to get switched over?
You'll see it in a few, yes.
Is it this significant?
In some cases, yes. In some cases, I think the numbers went down.
Hang on, Joe. Mr. Cronin?
I looked at the big picture on page 214. And while I can understand this allocation and Scott's, you know, concern, if you look on 214, his actual total revenue and total expenditure numbers, the big numbers are about the same. I mean, for instance, he, the total revenue in his department is $44,370,000 requested. It's about 4.16 million year before. And even the expenditures are slightly higher, but not that much. I mean, it looks to me like, based on the numbers that are there, okay, they're not that, they balance out. I don't know why you shifted from other funds, but it looks like just about the same amount of money's coming into his department and just about the same amount of money's going out. You've just shifted the allocation. Am I right?
Well, after I met with Mr. Shippman, his fund was out of balance by $900,000. But Mr. Shippman went back in and retooled his budget to accommodate the absorption of that additional cost allocation hit. And to his credit, he was successful in being able to do that. So, his budget looks a whole lot better now than it did the afternoon that I went down and spoke with Scott for about an hour and a half.
So, you figured out a way to basically eat that 900 grand?
Well, I didn't eat it all.
Right.
But I gutted our capital, I mean, you know, which was things for the future, aerial photography, things like that, to keep us on the cutting edge of technology.
Right.
So, those things, and don't walk away from this, saying that I'm against the cost allocation, because I'm not.
I get it.
I think it's important that we all understand what, you know, what it is.
But to go from $65,000 to $954...
Is a lot.
Is a lot.
And there could be possible discrepancies in some of the allocations. I mean, I've seen that just from the IS side. You know, if everybody knew how the game was played, so to speak, you know, we could fine-tune even more. But I don't know exactly.
Even in capital, last year, the capital, estimated capital was $170,000. This year, the executives recommend $610,000. Your capital budget's going up.
Well, that's not a revised number, though, Joe. I mean, it's since been...
That's what's in what we have.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Just an observation here, and Bob and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, what, first of all, we're guilty as charged. We probably should have been doing this for several years. It just never, we just never got to the point in the budget where we had to start looking other places. But you're right, we should have probably been doing this for several years ago. Here's what it's all about. Think about this. 70 years ago, I have a...
Hang on, hang on. I'm sorry.
Are you guys on board?
Yeah, we're just looking at the numbers. Go ahead.
I understand. Keep explaining, though. I want you to hear this. So, go ahead.
Well, just kind of to put it in perspective.
Okay.
Years before Scott start working at the assessor's office, the county provided salaries and office space and pencil and paper, right? You know? And nobody made a big deal about the pencil and paper, all right, because it wasn't that big a deal. But as you know, I get as frustrated as you all when, you know, when we have every so often, you know, we have these big expenditures to go into the cloud, to buy this, to rent that, to whatever. I mean, you know how much additional money we seem to spend every year on this technology, okay? So, what we're really, instead of just putting the 1%, we're asking everybody to kind of chip in based upon how much they use it. Obviously, the highway, the people in the highway department don't use their computers nearly as much as the people in the assessor's office. And you're absolutely right. We're guilty. Looking back, it'd been better if we'd been doing this the last five or six years, and hopefully, we won't need to continue to do it in quite the same way. But right now, this is, this is what we've come up with, and if you can find a better way, we're willing to listen.
Here's my only concern, based on what you said before Bob came up. This is unsustainable. I mean, we heard that from Tim. We heard that from them. But are you going to be able to make it through 2018 with this budget? Or are you not going to be able to make it through 2018 with this budget?
No, we can't. We have reserves. But going forward, you know, our operating, there's not a whole lot of things in there that we can tweak.
Right.
And salaries is the place where we could impact. So, if I've got to start knocking salaries around, or at least people, that's, you know, I need to know that going forward. I understand it, believe me. And I shared that with Bob. I mean, you know, it's not that there's any mischief on any side, but I think that continuing down this path with this allocation, without everybody on board and knowing what's going on...
Right.
It's just going to divide all these departments. I mean, I could turn around and say, you know, we do stuff for departments all the time.
Sure.
And I don't want it to get to be that. We, you know, we've served one common goal, you know, county government, be the best that we can be. That's what we need to be focused on. This, to me, drives a stake between us, starts to drive a stake between us. You know, maybe you stomach it for the year or two years. I don't know. But going forward, the cost allocation really needs to be everybody together and understand what we're being charged for.
Well, it sounds like it is kind of everybody together. We just did a poor job of communicating that, and it just kind of got dropped in your lap, for lack of a better term. We should have done a better job of, when we were putting this budget together, having those conversations along the line and saying, hey, this is what we're looking at doing, and maybe helping that out.
I'm unsure of the verification of it, too. I mean, to be honest, I mean, I got a chance to look at the plan after Bob and I talked, the Maximus cost allocation plan.
Right.
And there's some, there's some issues in there.
Well, I think, we've all heard, we heard it last year, and we heard it this year. There's some issues in there all the way around, just because the pie is getting smaller than, and we're being asked to do more. I mean, to Tim Lomar's point, law enforcement is not going to get less busy in 2018 than they were in 2017. That's only going to get worse. I'm sure the election authority is going to tell us about how we're going to have a whole bunch of elections in 2018, where we didn't have them in 2017. They're going to have a lot more going on. Every department's probably going to stand here and tell us the same thing, but we just have fewer dollars to spend.
But I'm not seeing that in the numbers. On page 214, for instance, personnel costs, what the executives recommend is $270,000 in what was spent last year. You got a bump on personnel costs. Capital outlay, it's a bump up, okay? It's on 214. For instance, personnel costs for expenditures, Steve's recommending 3.6 million. The estimate for 2017 was at 3.3 million. So, you got $270,000 more for personnel. If you go down to capital outlay, estimate for '17 was $170,000. The budget's got $610,000. So, I mean, to me, I don't, I don't see it on page 214 where there's any...
Councilman, I think what the assessor's been telling you is, he's been working with Debbie to bring that down. So, he's had some positions that haven't traditionally been filled, but he's budgeted for in case he needs them. I think you knocked those out, didn't you, Scott? And he's removed some things from his capital plan that he intended to buy with his own assessment funds and done some other things. Because even though he has a very significant fund balance each year, he's trying to make sure that his budget within the year is balanced between his revenues and his expenditures. So, that's a decision he made to try to make sure that you keep that significant fund balance there in case there's a need for it.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I've understood you saying this is, after you found out you were going from 65 to 954, you made cuts and made adjustments in your department to get to the numbers that Mr. Cronin's talking about, to where, when you look at the overall number, it doesn't look horrible, but when you, you're missing the backstory of what had to go in to get to that overall number. Is that fair to say?
Yep. I don't know what revision they have, but that is, that is what was done.
Okay.
Right.
Do you not have the revision we have? Do you not have, does she not have the revision?
He's got it. He's got it. But nothing shows the intermediate step from when the budget was prepared and we put and we, we put it together, um, and then talked to Scott about the, what's not showing is the original budget Scott recommended then hit with the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars to show a large deficit. What you see is what Scott originally submitted and after Scott agreed to take the hit and reallocated other expenses and other line items in his budget. You don't see the big deficit as that intermediate step when Scott and I had an art discussion six weeks ago.
But I see, I see approved or recommended expenditures for personnel that are considerably higher than what we spent the last two, three years and also for capital. And be frank with you, looking at this, this, it looks to me like he should be dancing in the streets because like, for instance, the, um, the personnel costs is seven percent. Our personnel costs haven't gone up seven percent.
But part of that has to do with positions that are budgeted a year ago versus positions that were actually forecast in the 2017 estimate. Are you looking at the 2017 estimate versus the 2018 budget?
Through eighteen on personnel costs. And fifteen is personnel costs were two point eight million. And the, the executives recommend three point six million. So I mean, it's been steadily rising, but he got a pretty healthy increase in personnel costs for this coming year.
What page are you on, Joe?
Two fourteen.
Two fourteen.
I'm looking at the big picture.
Where he's looking at personnel, operating and capital outlay.
He's looking at the.
Hey, with all due respect, Mr. Cronin, we're going to need to wrap this up shortly because we need to move on to.
Can I ask you a quick questions for Scott?
Yes.
Scott, you're a lot younger than I am, but I need to ask you a history question.
Uh-oh. You knew it was coming.
When you first came, when we first started getting computers, I, I was told that every, it was kind of every man for himself. And, and the assessor's office like had their own computer and their own, their own budget for it and everything else. And the collector had a different one. And I don't know, the highway department might have had something else. So we didn't have what we have now with kind of a centralized maintenance system.
That's right.
And trying to, so in a sense, this was never a problem until we tried to save money by putting everybody together and getting everybody on the same system. And would that be fair?
Yep.
Yeah.
No, I'm not denying that, I'm not denying that there's, there's shared cost.
Yeah.
I mean, I've never said that.
And by the way, you've done some great projects for me, uh, over the years. And I guess when you do the next one, you need to send me a bill.
Hold on.
It's about nine hundred thousand dollars.
I'm happy to help.
Mike, let's, we got to finish this. We can't be giving any.
That's why I just said.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is we got to give him, we got to address each, we don't, can't come back to this.
Let me address, Joe, your question.
Sure.
Okay.
The, you have to, you have to compare apples to apples here. So the, the, if you're looking at the executive recommend budget of three million, six oh six, you've got to compare that to the seventeen budget, appropriated budget of three point five eight six million. That's the budgeted number for seventeen. This is the budgeted number for eighteen. And there's virtually no rise in that, maybe twenty thousand dollars. Okay?
We just got by cheap this year, cheaper than expected this year.
Vacancies on staff will lower the seventeen estimate number.
Okay.
And that's the result of, of having ten or eleven months of information now. And we know that positions were not filled. So that's why you see the three point three three million go to three point six oh six.
So in reality, he's getting about the same as he did previous years.
Correct. Right.
So you can't dance in the street today.
No dancing in the streets.
Especially when your operating cost goes from nine eighty-eight to a million seven. Yes.
So Scott.
Thank you, guys.
Well, hold on.
He has more.
With this budget that is submitted, what does this mean? When you, you're concerned, so.
I'm concerned, but you know what? I'm moving forward.
No, I understand that. I understand that. But what I want to know is this, is how is this going to affect your department? In what negative ways? Or is it going to just, you're just going to suck it up and get by?
It's what we're doing.
So you're, you're, you have no request from us? You're saying that this is, it is what it is?
I'm saying that if it continues year over year, I mean, it's an unsustainable path. My, my excess revenue, I guess if you want to look at it, will be gobbled up.
So how much reserve do you have? I didn't, is that, do you know about?
We can find that out for you.
Is it, is it, so explain this to me though, Bob. Is his reserve just, is it just his reserve?
Yep.
Okay. Is it?
We'll find that number for you.
Okay.
His reserve.
It's blank in the budget.
We're moving forward though, council. I mean, I, I do want to, you know, like I said, we're, we're all playing fair here, so. It's just a concern moving forward.
They said they'd get you that number. Mr. Brazel.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I'm fine. I just, okay. How much money are you pulling on a reserve though? Could you tell us that? Is it nine, it's not nine hundred? Is it nine or eight hundred and eighty thousand?
It'll be close to that with my adjustments. I think it'll be close to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll be close to that.
That's why I'm saying this is going to dwindle down what he's got left over. So when things come up, he's not going to have something to reach back for, for an emergency. And that's, is that fair?
Or, or technology things that, you know, we want to do in the future. I mean, you know, those things have to be planned and budgeted.
Right. Like the aerials you said we're not going to be able to do because we had to take those aerials out. I'm going to take with that that we're good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Michelle. Thank you for your patience and your flexibility. Sorry, we're running a little behind.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't email this to you, but I do have a printout for everybody. Same song, you know, and I like to be a good player in the sandbox. This is a ten year history of the collector's budget.
I got one, Scott, I got one more question for you. On the reserves, is that, who controls that?
Well, when you say control, I mean, I'm.
I mean, do you just pull money out as needed? Does it?
It's a statute. It's a budget.
It's a statute. It's under his, yes. It's under his.
Under his discretion or whatever?
I have one last thing for Scott.
Sorry, Michelle.
If things get to where it's affecting your ability to serve the, the public the way you have to in your position, would you please let us know down the road?
Well, you're letting us know now, aren't you?
Well, no, he's saying he's can get by, but it ain't, it ain't sustainable.
We have to, we have to remove staff.
That's what I'm saying. Let's make it clear.
This year. Right.
I mean, realistically, I'm just going to pigtail on what Scott's been saying and, and Tim has said, and even what Mr. Elman has said. You know, we've been cruising down this path for a while. I remember the very first budget session I came to as an elected official. And at that time, we had a county property tax rate. And as you've said, it's been whittled down to zero. We have nothing.
Right.
We are all in agreement. We can't sustain this going forward. If Scott cuts into his reserves, the problem is there's no county reserves either. The county has cut into their reserves. So it's, it's going to have to be a full force. Everybody works together. I mean, my budget, um, I didn't have any meetings. Nobody told me. I get it in print. You know, they've cut fifty-nine thousand for my operating budget. Um, what the appropriated, planned appropriation for two thousand eighteen is less than my appropriated for two thousand eleven and less than, basically I've spent in the last six years excluding the first year of our merged annual billing, which really helped reduce costs that year. Now, granted, the cut has been put into postage, which obviously would have to be paid because by statute it has to be paid. That's the major part of the cut. Um, and that was moved to the tax maintenance fund budget, which is kind of similar to Scott's assessment fund, but not totally because I do get some general revenue. But if, if my budget is two hundred thousand dollars a year and you've cut fifty thousand, you've cut twenty-five percent of my budget. You were talking about the personnel cost and you can't really just look at personnel dollars because that's not even something we control. You can look at the number of positions and whether we're using our people responsibly or adding fluff layers. Um, but the dollars aren't determined by us. The dollars are determined by, you know, the salary study we did, which was great because we needed to do that to retain employees. Um, the benefit cost, which, you know, everybody knows they go up. So it's, it's not totally fair to look at personnel dollars only. You really need to look at number of positions, types of positions, that sort of thing, if you're going to start picking away at personnel cost. Um, I, I get a little concerned, you know, over the years, like I said, we did a personnel study which was grossly needed to justify increasing salaries to market value, to retain good employees at the county, because that's important. In the long run, good employees will cost you less. The turnover we've had in the IS department, no doubt, has increased the cost of operating our IS department. We had a huge study done before the current IS director was hired. And I, I'll be honest, I haven't looked at anybody else's budgets and stuff. I'm, I'm just speaking from a personal perspective. We had a huge study done. Um, we shifted gears. We've shifted gears. We've had almost a hundred percent turnover in the IS department. Uh, we're outsourcing our engineering. We're outsourcing print management. I just heard we are outsourcing how to allocate our cost between our departments. Um, that concerns me. Uh, if you look at our IS department today, there is a very small number of actual technical people in that department. Part of the reason our tax bills aren't in your hands right now is I started cutting data three times and it died. We stood up a server in between cutting the data for the personal property, which took over thirty hours to generate, and cutting the data for the real estate. We had to stand up a new server. We had to call in our software provider to help stand that up so that we could cut data twice as fast as well we had been cut. So.
When you say, when you say that, Michelle, are you talking about, is your, your IS, is it part of the county's, the Simon's IS? It's, it's one, one deal, right?
Well, I do help fund that. I mean.
No, I understand that. But, but, but that's the IRS department you're referring to. So when you say you're calling in IS people, you're saying you are personally calling?
No, uh, my understanding, because again, as I've stood before you at other times, I, I would like to be included in discussions that affect my department. Sometimes I am, sometimes I'm not. I did hear that they called in our software provider who offers a managed support thing, which we went to. I guess it was three years ago when we had six database administrators leave the county within a very short period of time. And nobody was there to support us and refresh our data or run updates to our, our software package. Um, so they have what they call a managed services, which is, you know, we've got the print management outsourcing stuff. So we, we paid to outsource a few years back. And when we were having all these troubles with our system locking up, with printing a receipt for a customer taking fifteen minutes while you're staring at them through a cashier window, when it should take less than a minute, the IS department, it's my understanding, called our vendor and asked them to assist. And it's my understanding the IS department is paying that bill because our own IS department should have and was historically capable of supporting us and keeping our systems up. And those systems are not staying up. I don't know what you're hearing. Um, and for the public facing offices, that's very difficult. You know, when you've got something that's your print in a minute's time, somebody's come here because their plates are expiring and they're ready to get to the license bureau. And then you have to stand and make small talk for five, ten, fifteen minutes because you can't get the receipt to generate from the time you hit the pay button. That's an issue.
Is that occurring, is that currently occurring or was that a past problem?
It's something that we've been talking about probably, I'm going to say a year, year and a half. John, would you agree? John, um, when he took over, or was promoted to one of the director of administration positions, contacted me and said, you know, we meet with the other department heads and I'd like to meet with you every other week. And so he's been included in the discussions. He's been in meetings with me with the IS department. Um, these are issues that we've been working on addressing and, you know, thankfully, they stood up a new server. Thankfully, this week, it's been all good. But two weeks ago, it was hideous. Three times I, I cut off, started the program to cut the personal property data to get to the bill printer, server resets. Nobody knows why. You know, job hangs and nobody knows why. Programs that we run nightly, we have to run a late payment penalty interest calculation at twelve oh one AM, otherwise it doesn't have the right penalty and interest for the current month. Then we cut the data to go to the website. Then we cut the data to go to the Department of Motor Vehicle so that they have up to date information. These programs weren't finishing. One was running into the other, was running into the other, although these are the same programs we've essentially been running for eight years. So there's a problem there. And I'm, it's my understanding they're working to address it. We have a log of downtime. We have a log of slowdown times. We have a log of, you know, being kicked out of the system times. Um, and that's the data we've been sharing. But when you're down to one engineer who, please Lord, do not let him leave. I mean, this county would, the IS department would literally almost collapse. And nobody could provide service to the constituents because we don't have that heartbeat. The IS department is a heartbeat of an organization. When you rely on the data that Mr. Shipman has to rely on, the data I have to rely on, you can't just do all that manually anymore, not in the volume. So, I mean, I preached it for years. It's the lifeblood of the organization. Um, and I, sorry, I shouldn't use the word preached, but it's been a concern for years. And, you know, twenty-five percent of my budget's cut. Um, last year, they assured you and I both here that, you know, if we ran out of postage money, it would be covered. And I, I believe it will be covered. Um.
Mr. Cronin.
The path we're on is unsustainable and that, everybody's in agreement with that.
I, I think, Michelle, I appreciate you coming here. I think, I see other elected officials in the audience. I think we're going to hear the same litany. Okay? All right. Now, I like to take a little different track and I just want to be a hundred percent honest with you too. This whole new budget is predicated on sales tax revenues rising better than one percent. If you look at historical trends in sales tax revenue, it's going this way. Okay? So if we have a two or three percent drop in sales tax revenues, we may have to come back to you for more cuts, which is unfortunate. But if you look at, you look at trends, this year, for instance, Cyber Monday's supposed to be over more overall retail trends, more, more retail sales than Black Friday was. Well, Cyber Monday doesn't pro generate much revenue to county. I think personally, if the voters approved a thirty-five percent property tax increase back in the, or property tax, I shouldn't say increase, back in the seventies, I think going to those same voters with the explanation of these kind of problems we're having, okay, might be something the voters would look at again. Okay? They approved it in the seventies. I don't see why they might not consider it now. I've had people in my district actually argue with me when I say, you know, we don't charge. There is no county property tax right now that goes to county government. Oh, no, you should see the bill. I get, I said, look at your bill a little closer. It's going to school districts and the fire districts and other people. County government, direct to county government that supports your offices and Mr. Shipman and Mr. Chrismer and Mr. Lomar is getting no property tax revenue. I just, I, I, because of the rollback through the years generated by Hancock, okay? I don't think it's, it's unreasonable to go to the voters for that. And if they approved it in the seventies and they've been pretty good about approving things like capital funds, uh, taxes and transportation tax, what they need to hear is not just from us. They need to hear it from you folks that interact with them every day.
My clerks tell people every day on the phone, please look at your bill. Do you see that top line? General revenue, zero. That's exactly the amount of money the county gets to operate from your tax bill.
Sure.
So we've been preaching that story for years. In fact, before it went to zero, we said, look, we're getting a penny. We're getting two cents. So you're preaching to the choir here. We have absolutely been stressing that to the public.
To your point of what you're, what you're just asking for. So I don't know if you're aware, if everybody on the council is aware, um, there is a county speakers tour that is going on right now. Molly Dempsey has put that together. And a lot of our, uh, department heads are getting out in the community and meeting with groups, like rotary clubs, chambers, stuff like that, and having meetings and talking about, hey, this is what's going on in your county government. I, I know Michelle and Scott have both been part of those. I know Chief's been part of those. I don't know if you folks have been part of those or not, but I know, uh, we've got those tours that are going on and inviting people to learn a little bit more about county government. And one of the things that they're finding out is, hey, we're growing really fast, but you need to pay attention to how we're funded.
I have one other thing. I see Mr. Statler back there. Mr. Statler, you're the only county employee that we get to talk to and tell what to do. But I, I'd like you to, I'd like to, I'd like to, while you've got these folks in here, I, I would like to do a little numbers exercise here. I'd like you to gen, figure out what a thirty-five percent property tax, like we used to have back in the seventies, what that would generate in revenue for countywide. Okay? If you could throw that number at us. And then also, if you look at all the individual departments, like Michelle's and Scott Shipman's and Tim Lomar's, and I'm sure we're going to hear from Mr. Chrismer and Mr. Ms. Hall yet, and see what kind of shortfalls they're really having, okay? And add that all up and see where those numbers, how they jive. I'd appreciate knowing that. Okay? I'd like to see if we had a property tax like we had back in the seventies, would it fix all these problems these department heads are having? Would it give Tim Lomar the people he needs to make sure that the criminals are kept off the streets of the county? Would it, you know, help with the opioid problems we have? Would it help with the PD department or whatever? I mean, the only way we can really go to the voters and even talk about this is saying, we have this many dollars as a problem and we need this many dollars to fix it. And that translates into so many pennies on the dollar on a property tax if you would be good enough to prove that to the voters. So that's, that's what I like to hear.
Can I ask, you said thirty-five percent. Do you mean the restoration of the thirty-five cents?
Thirty-five cents. I'm sorry if I misspoke. It's thirty-five, what I.
Thirty-five percent, people would come with you with pitchfork, you know?
Well, thirty-five percent is zero, still zero. So there you go.
Thirty-five percent of zero is a bad.
Back what we had, what they approved from what I was told back when I worked on the budget last year is they approved thirty-five cents maximum back in the seventies.
I believe it was forty in nineteen seventy-seven.
I don't think that voter approved maximum has changed.
Well, Hancock, Hancock, because the sales tax revenues went up, caused us to roll that back to zero. We can't set it.
Basically back to nothing.
We can't set it for anything higher than zero.
But you would have to set the rate at seventy cents if you think you're going to get thirty cents of it.
That would be something for the finance folks to get with us. Okay?
Mr. Brazel, did you have something you wanted to?
I was going to ask, Bob, what is the reduction in revenue for the, for the county for this year? The, is, if it's estimated or what is the reduction, um, in revenue?
I need to understand that question, Lamar.
Well, if we're-
Are you asking year over year?
From, from, from seventeen to, to, to the next fiscal year, what is, is there, you said sales revenues down?
Yeah, if you go to page five of your budget, the general fund summary is there, and we budgeted seventy-two point one million dollars in revenue for 2017. We are expecting to collect seventy point two eight nine million.
Seventy, so what is that, what is that down?
So, we're almost two million dollars behind budget in revenues at this point, primarily because we, when we did the seventeen budget, we estimated that sales tax revenues were gonna go up by three percent, and we are currently negative nearly one percent in sales tax revenues. That's the biggest reason for that.
What is that? What's the percent on that?
It's a four percent swing.
Is it four percent?
Well, if we were expecting to be up three, and we're expecting to be down one, I'm from Arkansas, but I think that's minus four.
That's a four percent swing in, in, in sales tax increase.
Yeah, it's a two, it's less than that, it's, it's, um, if you're expecting-
But you go, you apply that four percent cent swing not to your, all of your revenues in the general fund, but just the sales tax portion of your, of your, of your budget, which is about forty-two million, so.
Right.
Forty-two million times, that is, uh, one point six, one point seven million, something like that, and that's the lion's share of the revenue shortfall that you see here between what we budgeted for seventeen and what we're actually forecasting for seventeen.
My question is this, if your, if your reduction in revenue is, let's say, four percent or three percent, but whatever number you wanna choose, then are we going across the board in reduction per department evenly? Like, if her, if her budget's being reduced by twenty percent, is that an accurate number, that her budget's being, that's what she said, twenty percent?
Yeah, well, on Michelle's budget, what we basically did is we, we kept her, her operating budget flat with historical experience, and we lowered it by, I think, a net, now, you, what, well, I'm, I-
No, I just, I'm just talking big picture.
Talking about, I'm talking about the last three or four years, okay?
No, no, I'm asking this question, is, is if in fact our revenues are, are down by, let's say, three percent, let's use that number, then how can we take, i- if it's gonna be an even reduction, then why would it be twenty, if her number's accurate, why would it be twenty percent on the revenue?
We don't, we don't budget, you can't budget that way, Joe. You can't budget by an even, you can't budget on an even percentage across the board. Okay? You, you've gotta look, and, and the best way to budget is, is by looking at what you've actually spent historically, what you expect to actually spend this year, and if you wanna try to hold the line, you budget in accordance with what you're expecting to spend this year for next year. That's essentially what we've done with Michelle's operating budget. I think we're ten thousand dollars or so off of what she is expecting to spend in twenty seventeen, okay? That's what we did there. It's, you can't go by percentages and universally apply that across the board, because different departments are driven by different things. Many, many departments, and you gotta pretty much totally get rid of the, the across-the-board in personnel. If you wanna do something about personnel, as a previous speaker said, you gotta eliminate positions. You just can't do a, a percentage across the board and, and, and do the right thing in your, in your budgeting process. So, we've tried to look at each of the departments based on what their historical experience has been, what their, their FTE count, full-time employee count has been, and look at what they're actually spending and say, "We have to hold the line here, so we need to budget, unless there's some extenuating circumstance that, that we can't hold the line. Hold the line, do what we've done before, and, and hold the line until a fix is in place." So, that's, that's the process that we've used here.
It's only about a forty, four and a half percent reduction from what she spent in seventeen to what you've got appropriate.
Forty-four percent?
Four point, oh, four point four. It's about four and a half percent. It's nine thousand dollars, so it's not that big a deal. I mean, I, I know it is to her, but numbers-wise, it's four and a half percent reduction.
Yeah.
And part of that, what I think that with this, what you're trying to say, this seventeen's budget was based on a three percent increase? A two percent revenue increase?
Yes.
We only, we had, we actually had a one percent decrease.
Correct.
Okay, so.
We're expecting to stay flat in this budget, so we're absorbing a three percent hit.
Michelle, I'll ask you the same question. Um, what does this mean to you? I mean, what does it, does this, are you gonna be able to operate your department function properly, or what are you, what are you, what are you saying?
Well, I, what it means is that if we go over budget and postage, the money's gotta come from somewhere. I mean, they cut fifty thousand in postage. And so, that fifty thousand has to come from somewhere.
So, whose question is that? Are Bob's or Jo- Joanne? If she's gotta mail stuff out, I mean-
They'll cover it. That's what they said last year.
Did it cover it? Did it cover it?
As far as I know, it got covered.
Okay.
Well, yeah, okay, so.
But the, the, the trend is, though, I mean, I've submitted basically a flat budget since 2013. Actually, the county executive recommended a thousand-dollar increase. Last year, I was cut sixty-two hundred, and this year, you know, fifty-nine hu- thousand.
Do you, do you, you don't have, you don't have, I don't know how it work. Bob, does she have reserves? Do you have reserves?
No.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm not saying I need more money right now, because I've been assured if the postage runs out, it'll get covered. I'm just confirming, as you've heard, and, and you all agree, we need to do something. It's the same song, it's song.
Yes, sir. Just one follow-up point to Joe's question earlier. Uh, one, for every penny, general fund property tax, you're generating eight hundred thousand dollars. So, a thirty-five, a thirty-five cent tax levy generates twenty-eight million dollars.
Okay, so we might not need anywhere near close to thirty-five cents.
No.
I guess the next question would be, is I would like to find out from Mr. Statler, what it would take to fix this budget, so that we see smiling faces from our elected officials out here, okay? You know, and we, and put it this way, and I shouldn't say, I say it that way, but what I mean is, your example, the person having to wait fifteen minutes for a receipt, people don't want that from county government, okay? So, what do we have to do so that person doesn't have to wait the fifteen minutes in line? Or what do we have to do so Mr. Shipman can sustain his needs for, for new technology down the road? Or Tim Lomar's got enough, uh, court officers to take care of the backlog of criminal cases he's got? So, I mean, Brent, I think you know where I'm headed with this. If, if you could get a number, because if one cent brings eight hundred thousand dollars in, maybe the fix is a nickel or a dime on a property tax, which I think if we do a good enough job explaining to the public why we need that, it may not be a big deal, okay?
Don't forget rollback.
How do we have to calculate that? Isn't that the worksheets that get submitted to the state on the pro forma? And is it if we adjusted the numbers that we anticipate for sales tax on the tax rate pro forma that gets sent to the state audit, would that be also affecting on that all that?
We can have a-
We'll have to do some calculating, that's-
It's getting down to weeds a little bit, but-
But that's the legal tax rate.
What we've, what we've, what we've talked about before here is the fact that, starting in two thousand and fifteen, the sales tax rollback that we're required to apply to our property tax rate exceeds what levable tax rate we have at this point. We have right now, at this point in time, a tax rate of negative nine cents, because our sales tax, over the course of time, has increased, half of that sales tax is what you have to rollback by, and that sales tax, that half of that sales tax has increased by more than the amount of property tax we have levable at this point. It's been, I mean, our sales tax has been going up since the seventies, so, take the increase in our sales tax from nineteen seventy-five or seventy-six, whenever this rollback started, and roll it forward thirty-one years, and sales tax has gone up monstrously. And that's, that's taken away our full thirty-five cent levable tax rate. And right now, our tax rate is, by the calculation, is negative nine cents.
But if the Amazons and Ebays of the world have made that change, or our sales tax revenue starts going the other direction, which unlikely it is, okay?
Yeah, I mean, if there was a-
Then that, then that favors us for Hancock, correct, on the rollback?
I hate to cut this off, but we have two elected officials that we need to get to, and we're not gonna be able to give them each fifteen minutes.
We got time to crunch, crunch the numbers, actually.
Yeah, we can get to this later. Thank you. Mr. Chrismer, I'm sorry for running so far behind. Ms. Hall, I'm sorry we're running so far behind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I can tell you that I'm not coming here with any negative news. Our budget doesn't do this. Our budget goes up and down. We're like a mountain. Odd years, low, even years higher. We had four elections last year, we had, uh, three this year. Luckily, two of them were very small, but it still takes staff. The reason I'm here tonight is I'm trying to save an employee. St. Charles' election authority is very efficient, and has the smallest staff of any of the state's charter counties. Jackson County, near Kansas City, has twenty thousand fewer registered voters than us. St. Louis City has eighty thousand fewer voters than us, yet both election authorities have more than thirty staff, while St. Charles County has only fifteen, which includes myself. I'm one of the fifteen. The two directors and assistant directors of elections in Jackson County have a combined salary of almost four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. My direct, my, my salary and my assistant's salary combined is a hundred and sixty-one thousand, yet we do the very same thing as those people do getting paid four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I think that's pretty darn efficient. Eight years ago, we had sixteen staff members, but when, but when, when we went to the state's voter registration database, one of these positions was then done by computer, and I volunteered to have that, that position eliminated, which we did. Joanne Lachlan was very nice in helping that lady find another job in the county. So, that was very nice to her. But we did voluntarily eliminate a position that I felt we didn't need. A few years ago, when the county had a meeting to discuss the election authority, which included council member Joe Brazel, Mike Klinghammer, Joanne, my assistant lawyer, myself, my assistant director, my account clerk, we, uh, we called the positions, and I, I and, and council member Brazel, and my, uh, my assistant director recall specifically that this, the positions that we had in the election service account should be moved into the general fund. That did not happen. Those salaries and benefits for those positions were charged to public schools, that's right. A county employees' salary and benefits were charged to public schools, fire districts, uh, ambulance districts, the cities, and other political subdivisions. As per Bob Snur's directions, and when, uh, as per Bob Snur's directions, and when my account clerk wrote an email at my direction questioning this practice, his response was, and I quote, "My suggestion would deplace this FTE, full-time employee, into the same type of treatment as other types of election expenses. This staff member is not a qualified election expense. As she does not, she does voter registration in a partisan position for checks and balances in my office. We have four jobs that are bipartisan, Democratic, Republican, to keep it, checks and balances." Just prior to, and we only have fifteen employees right now. Just prior to Thanksgiving, Bob Snur phoned me and said that if I did not charge the public schools, the fire districts, et cetera, he would eliminate a position in my office, which later, he told me he did eliminate from next year's budget. That pushed me down to fourteen people. With only, with only a staff of fifteen, one of the smallest in the county, every staff member is critical to our operation. The position he eliminated has a salary of thirty-two thousand with a benefit of sixteen thousand, a total of forty-eight thousand dollars. This is a full-time position that I have had in my office for over eight years. I met with Joanne, and her original response was the county has no money. Later in the month, her and Debbie Seville found twenty-four thousand dollars, and about a week later, it dropped to twenty thousand dollars, which left a deficit for my employee to stay on staff in this county is twenty-eight thousand dollars to keep that curtain, that person employed. The county found money to increase the salary of the new director of facility maintenance. The county found money to hire a new employee for IS, another employee by the municipal court, which later on this evening, you'll probably approve. The county's budget next year is almost, well, it's more than seventy million dollars. Surely, the county can find an initial twenty-eight thousand dollars to keep a critical position in the election authority. No one else I'm hearing is losing an employee, because they don't charge the public schools, the fire districts, the ambulance districts, the cities.
Richard, just, just to the point here, I, I wanna, I know I talked to you on the, no, let me, let's, this has some real quick questions here. We talked on the phone, and I just wanna be clear, I did talk to Bob, and I tried to get Donna or Carol to look up the meeting minutes of the meeting we had, 'cause I wanted to find out exactly where we went with that. It was, we were all, Joanne, Joanne, you were in those meetings, weren't you?
Yes, she was.
Was that last year or two years ago?
Two years ago.
And, and what we did was, is in order to settle the grievance you had with the administration, we tried to come up with some compromises, which would make you agree, and administration would all come together, so we could just settle it and get it resolved, correct?
Correct.
All right, so Drew, you were in those meetings too, right? And we couldn't find any meeting minutes. I don't, I don't know, Donna, you, we couldn't remember. And so, why, these are just very simple questions. Your basic, your basic concern is, is that you're saying that the county should be paying for that one, that one personnel, right?
This, this is a county employee that should be paid flat salary and benefits by the general fund.
All right, Drew, my question to you is, you were in those meetings too, right?
Yes, sir.
What was your understanding, when, and Mike Klinghammer would be here, and he would remember this meeting as well, but what was your understanding, you can come up if you want, or whatever. What was your understanding of, in order to resolve that, Richard's claiming that, that we agreed, and if this was how it was done last year, then you're right. If, what you're saying, if the county paid for your employee last year, then that's probably what we agreed to. Did we agree to pay for this, or do you, what do you?
Quite honestly, councilmen, I don't recall, but I do have some notes of the meeting, I'd be happy to pull those in, and-
The reason I'm saying this is, is whether or not you guys, whether or not his employee gets paid for or not, the issue I'm speaking of, it was in agreement to coming up with some resolve, an agreement with a dispute, and so we agreed. If in fact, that's what we did, we agreed to pay for that personnel to solve the, for, for the term of that person being employed, that was the agreement of our resolution. And so, it's not fair, if that's true, and me and Bob, we don't have meeting minutes, so my point is, is did we pay for that employee last year?
No.
No, we did not.
You know how it was paid? It was charged to the public schools, to the fire districts, to the fire ambulance districts, to the cities. It was charged to them.
And to the county.
This is a county employee, a full-time county employee.
Hang on, hang on.
It, it was also charged to the county. It was to anybody who had an election, right?
In an even-numbered year, the county will pay about two-thirds of it. In an odd year, the county, this year, for instance, the county didn't pay a dime for that person's salary. So, Bob Snur said in an email, or to, in a phone call,
Right.
that we should charge it to, it's called a two-thirty-four general fund.
Right.
Okay? That was, that's really in the general fund. He says he doesn't agree with it. My account, my account clerk was in, was in the office and heard him say that. We even put those notes into the budget.
All right, Richard, hang, hang on, hang on. I understand all that, but what I, what, all we need to do is find out, if Drew can check his notes. I, Bob, I understand what you're saying as well, but the fact is, we gotta figure out-
I don't think we do.
Maybe I don't, maybe we need to, but, but we, if we agree, no, what I'm telling you is, if you figure out a way to pay for it one way-
This was agreed to in two thousand and fifteen.
I know that, Bob, but what, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. All I wanna know is, is what we agreed. We agreed to pay for that employee. It doesn't matter how.
It's documented on, on the practices of how these election costs were calculated in two thousand and sixteen for four elections, and the April twenty-seventeen election. We've been doing it for five elections.
Well, well, let, let me, let me make this point, and, and I'm not saying what you're doing is wrong, right or wrong. What I'm saying is, is as far as he's concerned, regardless of how we paid for that employee, it was a county's respons, if that's the agreement we had, it was a county's responsibility to take the onus off of him and us pay for the employee. How you pay for it, I don't know if it matters.
No, that wasn't the agreement.
For ten years, my election service account, that's the one that I get from the state, and a proportion, five percent portion of every election, paid for two employees for this county. That was over five hundred thousand dollars that came out of my election service fund. We finally made the agreement to pull them out of my election service fund and put it into general fund. The point is, why is the county employee being charged to the public schools, to the fire district, to the ambulance district, and to the cities? Why is that person who works for us, has been working for us for eight years in that particular position, why is that person being charged to these political subdivisions? Why isn't it paid by the general fund? Because the statute says that election costs have to go to the county, and they cannot be subjugated to the elections.
Well, okay, Richard, but I, I know this. I know that Joanne was in these meetings as well, so it's almost like this is too complicated at this point in time to try- at this point in time to try to hash all these, this stuff.
Well, we got 20,000. She's found 20,000. All you have to do is find 28,000 out of $70 million to pay for this employee.
No, no.
But, but with all due respect, I mean, you've heard Scott talk about, he took a $900,000 hit. You took, you heard Michelle talk about, she's taking a $56,000 hit. I mean, everybody across the board is taking these hits.
I took a hit also. They cut my budget.
Drew, all I'm saying, Mike, is this is all I'm saying. And fairness to Rick.
I know, we need to.
We need to, we need, what, what, we need to figure out what the agreement, we did make an agreement with them.
Okay.
That's a fact. And we said if you, we agreed to the Motorola, the, whatever those things were.
We also had an agreement 10 years ago by Chuck Gross that said if you charge your service election, after two years, we'll give you another budget if you prove you need it. Those, those, those agreements come and go and nobody seems to know what they really are.
No, all I'm telling you is I wasn't involved in that one. I was involved in this one and so was Mike Klinghammer and so was Joanne and so was Drew. So let's figure out what it was and then we can have that conversation whether or not you guys want to.
Why are we, why are we charging public schools and school, the fire districts for county employees salary and benefits?
I appreciate your point, but to Joe's point, we're not going to be able to solve this matter tonight, right now.
We have to find 28,000, sir.
I understand and your request is, is on the record.
We don't, these guys don't know.
You're there.
None of these guys know the, they weren't in those meetings. We were in those meetings, but it was two and a half, three years ago.
If Drew's gonna go back and check and see if he's got notes.
But if nobody has notes, who do you, who do you accept? The point is, why is the county not paying for our county employee for its salary and benefits? That's the question, why?
I think what we did.
Why did I pretend to use money out of my service fund salary and benefits for another employee?
I think what we did last year, 2000, was last year to 2016, right? And what we did in 2016 would be pretty telling of what we should, what we agreed to do. That's, that's because that was.
We couldn't do it this year because we didn't have enough elections. Bob Snur called us and said, okay, we can pay for April, but we can't pay for, for August because it's too small and maybe we'll have a November. So what we need to do is we need to turn that and charge it into the 233 account, which is basically a general fund account for elections.
Rick, all I can tell.
And then he says he doesn't recall that.
No, listen, listen, listen.
Mr. Crissmer, hang on. With all due respect, we're, I've, I've already told you, we're not going to solve this tonight. You can continue to make the same point, which I appreciate you made, but understand, it's on the record. Your, your position's on the record. You're not going to get a yes or no from this body on that matter tonight. So all I'm asking you is, Rich, let us do the investigation that Joe was talking about and follow up with you and see where we end up from there. Is that fair?
That's fair, but you gotta remember, I got cuts this year just like everybody else. So it's just not, I was the only one that wasn't cut. I was cut just like everybody else.
I get that and I appreciate your position.
But I can't go without, this is a bipartisan employee. It's the Democrat and Republican.
Checks and balances, I hear you.
He said, well, if we get rid of the Republican, the Democrat, we might as well get rid of the Republicans too. Then I have nobody to do.
With all due respect, I, I appreciate that. You've made your point and I don't mean to be rude, but I gotta get to Ms. Hall.
I understand.
And I got 11 minutes to give her 15, which, my math is really bad if that's gonna work.
No, that's.
So thank you for coming tonight. We will follow up with that. Drew's on it. Joe is on it. We're gonna follow up and make sure that we can get this done. Hi. Sorry about running late tonight. We started late and we've been consistently late after that. So there you go.
That's how it works.
If nothing else, we're consistent.
Thank you. For curiosity, what's, what's the county rainy day fund? We used to have one. What's the balance in that?
The white part was the question?
The rainy day fund.
The rainy day fund that Joe Artworth always beefed up and bragged about.
He hasn't been here in 12 years, so I'm, I'm not quite sure.
I want to know if it still exists.
His rainy day fund may have walked out the door 12 years ago, but I'm not quite sure.
That was back when the sales tax was going up about 8% a year.
I've been here for four and I haven't heard of a rainy day fund yet.
So what I'm understanding from these comments is that it's been spent.
No. Bob, what's the fund, what's our, what's our emergency fund?
We got.
There is no rainy day fund. We have a fund balance in the general fund. It's 10% of revenues. And we, we hold to that as far as our, our budgeting target every year. That's, that's an adequate number to budget to. Our actual fund balance at the beginning of 2017 was 19 million. It dropped about $2 million from the year before.
So we got about $6 million in our rainy day fund.
Bob.
That's our res, well, it's a reserve, reserve rainy day, whatever you call it.
Our budgeted fund balance.
It's money that we have but don't spend.
Is that the same account, is that the same balance, fund balance that Joe was talking about all, all those years about calling it, he was calling it a rainy day fund? Okay, then I, I just, I'm sorry, I called it the wrong thing. So we have 19 millions in there at the beginning of 17.
Page five. It's $2 million. Is that, Bob, one question, on that 19 million reserve fund, is that also include the 7 million that's in Scott Shipman's rainy day, or, so that's an additional two? How many other, and I'm just asking, how many other, do you know, are there other? I mean, you don't have to give me, I just.
Are you asking for the, the.
How many other departments?
Ending fund balance in the special funds?
Yeah, how many?
There's a whole list of those we could provide the council and.
With large budgets?
It's, it's in the budget.
Oh, wait.
On page five of the budget, okay? It says, this is the generals, the whole general synopsis. It says right in there, I, I mean, everybody knows I've, I've got a bad thing about reading things, but I read it all. But there's an emergency reserve and what's the executive recommend is 2.2 million. What was, uh, was appropriated for last year was 2.1 million. It's on page five of the budget.
No, but that's not the total.
Well, the ending fund balance, so it's the 7.3 million.
Well, I'm saying, this is the, this is the synopsis of the entire county budget. It shows the, the $88 million a total, everything, and it shows an emergency on that synopsis page of 2 million bucks.
That's the mandatory statutory 3%, isn't it, Bob? In that line?
General fund.
It's just general fund dollars. There's a statutory mandate that we put aside 3% of whatever we get in general fund.
Mr. Brazel, look at the, look at the bottom line on the ending balance there.
I, I see that, but my que, my question is this, Bob, is a $19 million fund, is there, is that include the additional millions that are in the other different departments? Like the 7 million? It does not. So what is the?
That's the general fund, fund balance. That includes all general fund departments. IS, finance, HR, recorder, elections. All the general fund departments are rolled up into that 19 million beginning fund balance.
Okay.
I've just been informed that everything that you're saying, no one watching this can hear a word. So if you have more to add in the future, if you pop up to one of those, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Barbara, sorry.
And how much did we pay Maximus to do this intricate study?
With all due respect, we're here to talk about your department.
Well, I'm, I'm getting to that.
Okay.
I'm talking about.
Can you get to it a little faster for me?
How is the county spending money of late? What do we pay for Everbridge?
For what is it called?
These are all exciting and fun things, but what did they cost us?
$30,000.
What was that?
$30,000.
$30,000 for Everbridge? Well, my point is, when, when I, when I looked at my budget and realized that they were trying to charge me almost $100,000 for to.
What page is she on?
Whatever this is called.
Barb, what page are you on? Do you have a page you want to talk about?
Okay.
This, uh.
I have, I have two, I have, I have a special fund. That's what was coming up.
What page?
We're back, we're back to the same issue with Scott, right, Barb?
Yep.
Okay. The allocation.
228 and 234 are the page numbers for the recorders fund and it's split into two separate uh, spreadsheets or whatever you want to call this, to keep track of how it's spent because one of them is, is only, by statute, only to be spent on technology for the recorder's office. And the other one is for preservation of records. So the, the two statutes that, that I want to quote from, section 59.319 established a user fee and an additional fee for recording a document with the recorder of deeds. And in it, it says, $2 of that fee that we have, have to take out or collect shall be retained by the recorder and deposited in a recorder's fund and not in county general revenue for, and its for record storage, microfilming, and preservation, including anything necessarily pertaining thereto. The recorder's funds shall be kept in a special fund by the treasurer and shall be budgeted and expended at the direction of the recorder and shall not be used to substitute for or subsidize any allocation of general revenue for the operation of the recorder's office. And then later, I think that was established 1969. In 2001, they added an additional fee and $1.25 of that fee that the recorder has to collect now, additional. The recorder's, uh, shall go to the recorder's fund, which established, was established pursuant to section 59319. That's $1 and, oh, also $1.75 of that new fund I'm collecting goes to the county general revenue. So I have special funds and that's what they're looking at. They're looking at each department's special funds. It's for that department only. And they're wanting me to pay for.
Cost allocation.
Cost allocation, which is just. Who can tell you what that means? Who can tell you what? I looked at, I looked at the big book, basically, that was emailed to me about, from, from Maximus and it was listing all these different departments and how much of that department's services I was to pay for. And they were wanting to take it out of the recorder's fund.
Right.
Well, first of all, timeout, you can't, you can't subsidize the general fund by taking money out of the recorder's fund. Secondly, you could, you, I'm sorry, lost my place.
Can I pause you for just a second?
Second, oh, the second thing I was gonna talk about is my general fund budget. I operate.
Sorry.
I operate on less than $14,000 for my entire department. Now salaries, salaries is 900,000.
Okay.
Okay? But operating is 13,800 estimated for 17, 2017. And I have zero capital outlay and have had zero capital outlay for all the years that are on here. So the, the recorder's fund cannot be spent for, as a, as a supplement for general fund for operating or anything else.
Right.
Okay, so.
Can I give the administration a chance to respond?
Yeah, well, what they responded when I asked the question was like, oh, we have to look at all the money that's sitting around in other funds and use that. Or the, the other thing that I heard was, well, you have so much money in there that you'll never be able to use that. But the purposes have to meet the statute for expenditures.
Sir.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Madam Recorder, Barb, whichever you prefer, thank you for calling us this afternoon, at least giving us a heads up that, that you had this issue and we'll continue to talk about it. We did have time to discuss it, maybe half an hour. That first statute, could you read that last, just that last phrase again?
Uh, section 59319?
Yeah. Shall not be.
Shall not be used to substitute our, for, or subsidize any allocation of general revenue for the operation of the recorder's off, office. And it does say without the express consent of the recorder.
That's what I was gonna, I was gonna ask.
And let the record show.
And that's fine, you don't need to, you don't need to give it, but are you saying you're not consenting?
I am not consenting. Let the record show that I do not consent to this. And it was slipped in, I didn't put it in my budget request, certainly. It was slipped in there after what I submitted, so.
Okay.
And I don't, I can't tell you about the other county. I can't, I can't speak for any of the other departments for their special funds. I don't know what their statutes say.
Sure.
But the county needs to read the statutes and follow them when they're doing this sort of manipulating.
Mr. Cronin.
I'm looking at the big picture. I'm looking at your to, total fund. It's on page 25, 26 actually of the budget, okay? Your FTEs, your full-time employees are the same between last year and this year, so you didn't get any staff cuts. Your personal actual costs went from estimate of appropriated 959 to Mr. Elman's recommended 968, so you got a little bump there in extra money for personnel.
Wait a minute, where's the?
Page 26.
Okay, page 26.
Your operating budget last year was appropriated for 14,000. Now we're appropriating Mr. Elman's that recommended 19,000, so he gave you $5,000 more in operating costs.
Well, let me explain one of the things that brought that up.
Let me finish, please. That's raised a 25% increase in operating costs, okay? So it looks to me like they've been pretty generous to your department and the grand picture of the operation of your department. But if you're not consenting to us being able to use some of that money to get us through that pension, maybe Mr. Elman won't be as generous as he has been for your general budget.
Well, this wasn't so much generosity as they were, I discovered what they were, they were taking money out of the recorder's fund to pay for our phone service and our, the operating costs of the, of the office. And it was supposed to be $6,809 for next year. And I told them to take it, I took it out of my request, out of the recorder's fund and told them, they created a new line in the general fund and it has $6,809 in there for, that's for, for county phone service. Operate, operational costs. I mean, they don't expect, they wouldn't expect me to not use a phone in my office, I guess. But anyway, so that's what, that's why that was bumped up. They took it out of the recorder's fund budget and put it, a new line in the general fund.
Mr. Brazel, Brazel, do you have a question?
Yeah, Barb, I'm gonna ask you the same question as, how is this gonna affect your outcome of running your office this, this year, or 2018? Is it, is there something that you're, besides getting cut and getting that extra fee added, are you asking for something specifically or are you saying that, you know, what is it that you're exactly saying?
Every year, you can see, well, you can see in 2015 and then 2016 and then 2017, we've, our budget, operating budget, we've reduced it, it's gone down. We're doing that. So we can live with what's recommended in the general fund here.
It's a cost allocation.
The, the cost allocation just cannot come out of my special fund statutorily.
So with the way it's set up now is what, what kind of negative impact or effects is that gonna have on your department? And that, because I'm just asking, because you, you, everyone else is gonna unfortunately feel in the same pain, but I'm trying to just figure out, are you saying what, tell us what you're saying exactly?
Well, I, I wasn't gonna get into it. I don't think, I don't think my use of the IT department warrants whatever the amount was that they said. My, my, oh, I don't even have all that with me. Here it is.
Is there, is there, I know we gotta get going here because.
I gotta help pay for county insurance, human resources, $1,473. County auditor services, $550. County finance services, $17,440. Information services, $78,91. And communications for the department, $89.
Was, was there a memo, or any kind of informational provided to you that, so this was easily to, or, not, I don't know if it's easy to understand enough, but was there any kind of formula?
No, it was, surprise, it's on your, here's what you submitted, here's what we should get.
Here's what you got back.
Can we, Joanne, can we work on something like that so all these department heads, especially elected officials, I mean, they gotta know how to run their department and if we're gonna throw this, I don't know if this, this whole fee's been discussed in years past, I've never heard of it, have you guys heard of it?
No, it was proposed by Maximus.
This is the first year.
I understand that, so.
No, it's not, it's not the first year it's been done, it's the first year it's been used.
Okay.
So it's been used for grants in the past, but it's been done for, you know, as county counselor, we had to fill them out, every single employee had to go back through their calendars for the previous years, every two years, and be able to account for their time for every fund, not just for a department, every single fund in the budget is laid out, and so every supporting department has to do that every two years.
Okay, so can we, do you think is, is it gonna be too complicated for these department heads to have some kind of formula or something, so they understand what their expectations are gonna be, at least for next year, so?
I don't, I don't wanna know what, what the dollar amount is as much as, why the heck am I paying, being, being charged now for all these general costs?
Why did your cost allocations go up, is that your question?
I think that's what Bob started with, that just because of history, the county just charged one or a few fund instances 2%, and never actually looked at what that particular fund was costing in support to the county, and so with the revenue changes over the